I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the two republics which stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I welcome everybody here this evening. And before we start our regular meeting, we're going to have some public hearings. And if you'll take a roll call attendance, please, Mr. Latchamore.
Trustee Pelkey, here.
Trustee Menard, here.
Trustee Southwick, here. Trustee Arnold, there. Mayor LaBounty.
Here. Thank you. The first public hearing will be on Local Law One of two thousand twenty-three, Chapter sixty, the dog code of the village. And this code is to be uniform with the village of Champlain and the town of Champlain, which we share in common, a dog officer. Is anyone from the public like to comment on this? Anybody from the public would like to comment? Okay. The hearing on Local Law One, two thousand twenty-three, the dog's village code, that hearing is now closed. Second hearing will be Local Law Two of two thousand twenty-three, Chapter seventy-four, flood damage prevention for the village. This was necessary for DEC to review and get approval. And I believe we have received all the necessary paperwork on that. Is that correct, Mr. Latchamore?
That's correct. This has been approved by New York State DEC and meets all the federal emergency program.
Okay. Anyone from the public would like to comment on Local Law Two, the flood damage? No one makes a comment, then that hearing is now closed on Local Law Two of two thousand twenty-three, the flood damage. And now we go to Local Law Three of two thousand twenty-three, Chapter fifty-seven, subdivision four, the commercial industrial development of the village code. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board in regards to this?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. You state your name for the record, and we're here to receive your comments.
Andrew Stalcott, fourteen Columbus. I'm trying to understand, why is this code being changed?
Mr. Stalcott, this is not a debate. This is a information, you have an opinion. This is the law. We're proposing a change. So this is your five minutes to speak on why you think the law should or should not be changed. So now it's just your opportunity to address the board. And then when we go into our regular session of their meeting, then the board members will either comment one way or the other before they vote on this proposed change. So now is your five minutes to speak, Mr. Stalcott.
Hey, ever reviewed the comprehensive plan for the village of Ross's Point? This change doesn't comply with it. What due diligence was done for the comprehensive plan to comply with this code change? How does this code change help development? It doesn't. Completely hurts it. I asked the board, how do we increase development, lower the cost of living here, and bring Charles back to Ross's Point? How does this do that? It's another hurdle on development. Were any other spot zoning changes done, or anything else looked at? There's no other proposal in front of us today. There's been no other proposals. So it is a fine-tuned change here. It's a minute change. Approximately how much money is this going to save the village? Anything? Has there been any cost analysis done on this? Probably not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And the hearing for local law change, Local Three, twenty-three, fifty-seven dash four, that hearing is now closed. We will now go to Local Law Four, two thousand twenty-three, open a hearing for Chapter sixty-four, the electrical system municipal development for electrical boilers. My understanding was this was brought up before I was the mayor. It was brought up to a public hearing. There was brief discussions on this banning of these electric boilers, but apparently the board never voted on the issue. So now, we've been told by our village attorney, Mr. Renee, that we had again to vote to bring this to a public hearing, which we are doing now. And after this hearing, we can codify the local law change. But first, we needed to be, bring it back to a hearing before we could vote on it again. So does anyone have any comments on the electric boiler?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Stalcott.
You just said that it's to ban the electric boilers. That's an inaccurate statement.
Because of my understanding, back then, they were deemed not energy efficient, and that's one of the reasons why the board, I don't know, two years ago, three years ago, brought this up. And my understanding is, is Mr. Stalcott, or Mr. Stalcott, Mr. Latchamore, is this on the code already, and we have to vote on it? Has it been put in the code already about banning the electric boilers?
So what actually happened is, last year, it was, there was a public hearing, it never went to a vote. I sent it to New York State as far as it being a village, a local law. And then it was brought to our attention that there was not a roll call vote. So I called the state on this, and what they indicated to me is that we needed to bring this back to the new board, because it's a new board. Have the public hearing, and then I would just send them a memo of correction for the date that the board had its roll call vote, whether it passed or...
Okay, thank you for that clarification. You heard the same thing I did, Mr. Stalcott.
Okay, but this is not a ban on electric boilers. This is a requirement for energy efficiency.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
I backpedal on that. I used the wrong choice of words. It was the energy efficiency that the board was deliberating at that point on.
Thank you.
So the way that it would work is it would need to go in front of codes, Cooper, and you'd have to verify that it's an energy code efficient boiler. And there's, in the code, did you look at the code, how the code looks?
I didn't.
So it does indicate the criteria for the electric boilers.
I thoroughly read the code.
I don't think he has a problem with that.
And I just wanted to make sure that it was...
No, no, no. I misspoke, and I take those words back. I shouldn't have used the word ban. It's energy efficiency that we're looking for.
And I think they've been doing that already, Mr. Cooper, right?
Yes. They come and checkers on them, we just want to check them against the vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments in regards to this? So the hearing on Local Law Four, two thousand twenty-three, Chapter sixty-four, electrical boilers, that hearing is now closed. I will now go into regular session. And has anybody signed up to address the board on any other subject? No? Okay. Then we will go to the next item up on our agenda, which would be minutes of the November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, regular board meeting. Everybody should have a copy of those minutes. If there's any changes or revisions, we can have discussions. If not, then I need someone to make a motion to accept those minutes as printed.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed? Second?
All those in favor of accepting the minutes of November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting as printed, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Mr. Letourneau, the treasurer, we have bills?
We have one addition this evening, it's to Mesa Corporation, in amount of six thousand eight twenty-eight seventy-six, that's the monthly bill for October.
Okay. Any discussions on the bills? If not, then I'd like to make a motion that we pay the bills. I need a second?
Second?
All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, bills will be paid. Correspondents, Mr. Latchamore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have a couple things. First of all, I just want to let all the residents know that we will be holding our annual parade of toys on December first of two thousand twenty-three, beginning at six p.m. at Ross Park on Lake Street, Ross's Point. Watch for Santa as he arrives by fire truck. Join us in caroling down Lake Street to the village office, where we'll have some more caroling, hot cocoa, and a visit from Santa. And as everybody knows, this is the time that we also do the lighting of the tree out in front of the village office. The next thing that I have is, December is right around the corner, so once again, I just want to remind all the residents, it's been published in the paper and it's on the digital sign, that the village parking ban will be in, will be in effect beginning December first of two thousand twenty-three through March thirty-first of twenty-four, per village code one hundred and twelve dash seventeen. The parking of vehicles, trailers, and semi-trailers, or house coaches detached from their towing vehicles is hereby prohibited on all streets within the village between the hours of two a.m. and six a.m. from December first and through March thirty-first of every year. And the last thing is, I received notice from the fire department. We are pleased to announce that the Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company of Ross's Point Fire Department will be conducting their annual children's Christmas party on Saturday, December ninth, from noon to three p.m. at the fire station. All village residents and their families are invited to attend and visit Santa, who will be arriving via fire truck. Light snacks and drinks will be provided. Respectfully request the village board approval to allow the fire department to provide fire truck rides during these hours. Wishing the mayor and village board, along with all village employees, residents and their families a very joyous, healthy, and safe holiday season, and thank you for your continued support. Signed by the secretary, Dennis Roberts.
Thank you. And the others, Mr. Latchamore?
No, so I would just need board approval to allow the fire department to use the fire trucks for fire truck rides.
I'll make a motion to allow the fire department to use the fire trucks for, for fire truck rides for the kids. I'll second.
All those in favor of allowing the fire department to use the fire trucks during the Christmas party for the children, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the fire department has here broadement granted permission by the board to use those, that equipment. Anything else, Mr. Latchamore?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to go under myself, and we're going to call attention to the local laws that we had hearings on, and see if we have a discussion in the oral. Local Law One, two thousand twenty-three, Chapter sixty, the dogs code be changed to be uniform with the village of Champlain and the town of Champlain. My own comment would be to the board that we all use the same code officer. It just makes perfect sense that all the laws are easy for this one code officer to write, and it's uniformly throughout the whole town, so whether you move from Champlain to Ross's Point or vice versa, you are much aware of what the laws entail as far as your animals and your dogs. Anyone else have any comments?
I just have one. I'm very happy that there's nothing in this local law that's breed specific. We're not prohibiting any breeds of dog, based on...
And it's not that, not that much different from what we have.
No, I didn't deviate very much from what the present law is, but we just wanted to bring it up so we're all you.
Definitely, definitely.
Anyone else have any comments in regards to the dog law? If not, Mr. Latchamore, I need you to take a roll call vote.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and we are, now, Local Law One has been passed. The second one we're going to discuss is Local Law Two, two thousand twenty-three, Chapter seventy-four, the flood damage prevention of the village code. This was necessary to protect the residents for the flood insurance that could be used this spring or in the upcoming year for any reason. DEC has approved the certain areas that are designated as flood zones, and I think this is a good idea to protect those residents in those areas. Anyone else have any comments from the board? Then if nobody has any comments, I'll take a vote. Mr. Latchamore, you take a roll call vote.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye.
The ayes have it, Local Law Two has been passed by the board. Now we go on to Local Law Three, two thousand twenty-three, Chapter fifty-seven, subsection four, commercial industrial development village code. I just want to give some background in regards to my opinion in this. Mr. Latchamore, the administrator, myself, and Trustee Pelkey were discussing a rate study, discussions with NIFPA, who supplies us with electrical power. We went over the pros and cons of the electrical study, and also we went over the codes of the village in accordance. And when we hit this particular section, the people from the New York State Power Authority strongly suggested that we change it because of the possible indebtedness that the residents of this village could incur. I know that there has been some discussion about Mayor, or Governor Hokel supplying this money to, for upgrades for substations and municipalities. The administrator and I made some phone calls last week. You can correct me, Mr. Latchamore, if I'm wrong in anything I say, that we discovered that mostly, just about every one that got any money from New York State or county, at the county level, there was only one township, I believe, was that correct?
There were two towns.
Two towns. And from what we could understand and learn, there was no guarantee how long this money would be there. There was no guarantee whether, whatever we applied for, we'd have to get a grant writer, and whether the grant would cover one hundred percent, seventy-five percent, or a hundred percent of whatever the debt would be incurred for upgrading this commercial property. And if it was, whatever wasn't covered would be inherited by the residents through their taxes. So my recommendation is, because there's too many unknown factors here, is that we change this law to protect the residents of this village. It has nothing to do with hurting any business coming into our village. My job is, as mayor, is to make sure that the decisions of this board are to protect the residents and the taxpayers of this village. And I believe by changing this law, it's going to protect them going forward. It's not going to harm them, it's going to protect them. That's all I have to say in regards to that. I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to say.
Mr. Mayor, one other person that you left out of the equation that we called, we left a message to do a little bit more inquiry, because based upon the articles that were provided to us by Mr. Stalcott in reference to this, was some of the counties, it was through economic development. And if you recall, we left a message for Molly Ryan?
Yes.
To the Clint County Economic Development to give us a call concerning this, and she has not returned our call.
That's absolutely correct. I forgot about reaching out to Ms. Ryan, and that was last week.
Yes, of course.
And as of today, she has not reached out to us, so we only can go with the information that we have been able to find out, and I'll repeat myself. As a job as mayor and to direct this board is to protect the residents. And I believe that this, changing this law will protect the residents from incurring unnecessary debt. It's not going to stop this village from developing any business. We will work with any and all businesses, but we will not incur the debt. That's all I have to say. Anyone else have any comments?
Are you opening up to the public or just the board?
No, just the board. The comments are all done. Anyone on the board have anything to say?
I just want to advise that we are aware that this is something that will affect the cost of doing business for development, but we have to weigh that versus if we put this in place, we may lose some development, but if we don't, and it goes to the taxpayers, that's a lot of people possibly selling their homes and moving away. And that's worse, and we want to avoid that. We do want development, that is the ultimate goal, but we, our job here is to protect the taxpayers and the residents.
Absolutely. Anyone else have a comment?
The way I look at it is, we've been advised that this is the best interest for the village, the best way for the village to go forward, so that's the way I feel, that I think we should go forward with this local law. Because I was in these conversations and listening to what they're telling us, we can be to protect the residents and the taxpayers in this village. And a lot of people can't afford extra costs, you know, with the economy the way it is. And when it comes to development for the businesses, this village board and employees will work hand in hand with them. One is reasonable and, you know, for the good outcome.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Latchamore, I take a roll call vote.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye.
The ayes have it, Local Law Four, Chapter twenty-three, fifty-seven dash four will be changed. Now we go on to Local Law Four, sixty-four, the electrical boilers that we talked about, about changing, allowing only the energy efficient ones within the village boundaries. Anybody have any discussions on that?
I just want to clarify that when you say that there's restrictions, it's restrictions for new installation. It's not, it's not to take out your, you're not banned from having your electric boilers that are presently in place.
Those were grandfathered in.
They are grandfathered in.
And only, you're a hundred percent correct.
So I just want to make that clear, that I don't want people to think that they have to take out their electric boilers if they have them now. It's just new installations, you have to meet the guidelines according to Mr. Cooper's code book.
Not correct. Any, any, any law changes that we do is effective as of the date of the change. Anything before that has been grandfathered in?
Right.
And we're just making sure that, I'm glad you clarified that.
Yeah.
Anything, anyone else? Mr. Latchamore, take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye.
Local Law Four, twenty-three, has been changed to reflect the efficiency standards that we require. Another thing on my agenda would be, we received, we sent out bids for the truck that the board authorized the administrator to do, and we only received one bid, and that was from Brennan Buick, and that was for forty-four thousand six hundred twelve, a pickup truck for the electrical department. Within the budgeted guidelines that the board approved, and I don't know if there's any discussion in regards to this before we move forward.
I just want to clarify, this is a pickup truck for the supervisor using electric? Yes, I just wanted to clarify what it was.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have one truck, this truck is in very bad shape.
Right.
It's full of rust, and we're going to, the electrical truck now, that's being used, we'll give it to Mr. Bernard for his, running his errands, because he's our handyman, welder, fixer-upper, and the electrical department is going to get this new truck. Mr. Juno and Mr. Chaffey will be using it for their duties, and we'll go from there. Anyone else? If not, then I need a motion to approve this bid.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid. Second?
I take a roll call vote, Mr. Latchamore.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye.
The bid has been approved. Mr. Administrator, you can send the appropriate paper out to Brennan Buick.
So one question I would like to ask the board is, John currently has the blue Chevy that he drives, or blue Ford, I'm sorry. What I would like to do is have that vehicle come here to the Civic Center. I don't want to invest any money, it's pretty much just worth salvage, but if we could utilize it for the Civic Center to drive back and forth to public works, especially in the wintertime, they have to use their own personal vehicles right now, so it would just be handy for them to go back and forth. Soon as we have to put money in it, then we'll send it for scrap, but, I mean, John's put new brakes, new tires, so, I mean, there's quite a few new parts on it, if the board's willing to do that.
And I believe he's indicated to us it's getting tougher and tougher for that vehicle to pass inspection, that he's presently using, and that just kind of escalated to the new truck for the electrical department. So I don't see a problem with that. I don't think that our village employees should be using their personal vehicles to go back and forth while they're working during hours. I don't know if anybody else feels differently, and I think this would be an ideal situation to allow that to happen.
Do you need your motion? Do I make a motion that we send the blue Ford pickup to the rec center for them to use to go back and forth to run errands?
I'll second that motion.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that we run it outside the village, so...
No, no. No, he's going to use it from here to blue building for parts or whatever, but I guarantee you that, I don't think I dare to take it outside the building myself, but anyway. Anyone else? No?
As long as it passes inspection right now, and we don't put any more money into it, I don't have a problem with it. But we want to make sure that it does have an inspection sticker on it.
Yeah.
For the safety of our employees.
And the fact, Mr. Bernard has told us it's in very bad shape, and it's close to the end.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense to invest any more money in it.
I agree.
So we had a first, a second, by whom?
You.
Okay, okay. We're going to take a, anybody in favor of this, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Okay, the ayes have it, the blue, the rec center will be using this truck until it no longer can be used. And the last thing I have, I like to say publicly, on behalf of myself and the board, I would offer my condolences to Mr. Renee on the loss of his father. I know it's a painful time, and I, and I wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
That's all I have. Trustee Arnold?
Yes, we got a bid for the Welcome Center, for the roof, and it's forty-nine seventy-five. And there's about twenty slate that's on the roof that's broken, and I don't know if Mr. DeSau wants to do it now, or whatever, but he's, he does have the slate and everything like that, where I don't think anybody else in the, in the area has any slate. And if they do, they're going to charge us quite a bit of money. So I, I recommend that we get Mr. DeSau to do this, if we want to do it now, or wait until spring.
No, we were discussing last week, is he going to check the rest of the roof for any more broken?
Yes. Yes.
And repair those.
Did they put rubber membranes underneath that slate before? So if he doesn't do it until spring, I'm just wondering if it's still protected. Sometimes they'll use a rubber like that Grace, water and ice. Right, yeah. I'm pretty sure they did that when they put the roof on. That way it can still be protected. It's not leaking, is it? No.
My question to you, Trustee Arnold, if it's not fixed right away, will any further damage inside the building be caused, or anything like that, in your opinion?
I don't think so. It's not leaking. It's not leaking, no.
It's just that if we don't address it, it will be?
Right.
Okay, so it's not leaking presently?
Right.
It's the board's pleasure. So you don't know if, it's up to us whether we want to do it now or then, or it's up to Mr. DeSau?
Up to Mr. DeSau. Because he's going to have to put up staging and stuff like that and everything, and like he said, he'd probably have to move it eight or ten times, the stage. So I don't know if... Is this a firm quote? So if he finds more, is it going to be, you know? No, this is the firm quote. This is the firm quote? Yeah. So even if he does it in the spring, it's not going to go up by ten percent or something? No.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion, need a motion on this, if everybody's in favor.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for the Welcome Center roof. Second?
Mr. Latchamore, take the roll call vote on this, please.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty? Mayor LaBounty?
Aye, and it's been approved for the welcome center. Mr. DeSo will be doing the work on behalf of the village.
On my way down here tonight, I noticed that there's a street light out on State Street, ninety-four State, Randy, in front of Randy Bedard's apartment building and there's one behind the village garage that's out where the electric, or the, the little car is, right in front of that door.
Okay.
And also on Lake Street in front of Vinnie Gates' apart, uh, Vinnie Gates' place. The street light is out there. And also on November twenty-fourth, the Christmas train will be coming at nine thirty, nine, nine thirty P M. and we'll be serving hot chocolates out of the railroad station starting at seven o'clock. Do we have coffee pots down to the village office still?
That Friday night?
Saturday.
Saturday is the twenty-fifth.
It's Friday night.
It's Friday night. Was it Friday?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Friday night.
It's Friday night?
That's why I was, that's why I mentioned.
Twenty-fourth? Twenty-fifth? Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth. Well, Thanksgiving is the twenty.
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
I, I believe it's on the twenty-fourth Friday.
Yeah. Is that the letter on it? I thought it was the, I thought it was on the Saturday, I thought it was on the twenty-fifth.
It is Saturday.
It is Saturday, it's twenty-fifth.
I believe so.
Yeah. So it's the twenty-fifth.
It's the twenty-fifth, yeah.
Okay. At what time? At what time?
It comes in at nine thirty for Christmas train.
Nine thirty.
Yeah, it's early.
Be here approximately an hour, half an hour?
What's that?
Train will be here in half an hour, an hour, somewhere like that?
Yeah, half an hour, forty minutes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else, trustee Arnold?
No, that's it for now.
Okay. Trustee Bernard?
Uh, just a couple of things. I would like to thank the electric crew and the public works crew for the response to the accident that, last week. They had a quick response and everything was fixed and back on. We had a car that hit a transformer and a fire hydrant and they came out after hours and fixed it very quickly, actually. And just would thank the village crew, the Christmas decorations look very nice, the village looks nice.
Just a touch.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, I want to talk about the volunteers in this village that help out, especially the ladies that take care of all our flowers and our gardens during the summer. I mean, they look really nice. I was talking to one of the ladies and she told me that she's been doing it since nineteen eighty. So I mean, that, what I call a crew volunteer. And it's just not just the ladies with the flowers and the parks, you know, the fire department, the Fourth of July committee. If it wasn't for volunteers, we wouldn't have a lot of things in this village.
That's true.
And I was hoping, you know, I was talking to one of the ladies today about the gardens and hopefully appointing, having the extra manpower at the civic, at the rec center here with the appointment of our new rec center manager, Heath Cardan, that things would go a lot easier, lots, you know, for them, prepping the gardens and whatever they need because, you know, sometimes they need help for the public works, but being shorthanded, we haven't had a manager for two years, so I think this is really going to help. And like I said, the Fourth of July committee, I mean, the committee, you can, you can see people come, you can see people go and they come back. There's a lot of meetings, there's a lot of work to it, but if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have our celebration for the fireworks and our parade and, and, you know, like the volunteers with the fire department. Trustee Arnold and myself, we've been volunteer firemen for over, over forty years each and you must have more than that.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five years. And it takes a lot to be a volunteer, but we're always looking for new members, so if anyone wants to come join any of the committees, they're always welcome. But special thanks to the ladies that make our village look, look nice. They put a lot of time, a lot of effort into the flower and gardens and it does show.
Yes.
No, they, I see them outside my office and they're working all the time, so.
It doesn't matter, I mean, how hot it is, I mean, they, they carry their water buckets and they take care of it.
They take a lot of pride in what they do.
Yes, they do. And we need to, you know, if you see them, reach out and thank them.
Yeah, exactly.
They do deserve it. And I want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving also. I'm sure the whole world feels that way. This is the time of the year that we can give thanks to what we have. Thank you.
Trustee Southwick?
I have a few things. Want, trustee Pelkey beat me to it a little bit. I wanted to publicly announce on camera that we have hired a rec, a rec center facility manager, Keith Cardan. Mr. Pelkey and I, we interviewed him and we were impressed with him. He's going to, we think he's going to do a good job here and we need a manager here.
We, we've definitely needed a manager for the last couple of years. Mr. Cardan is, is definitely going to be a good candidate. He's mechanically inclined and I believe he's going to keep this building running very smoothly.
Yeah, he has a good head on his shoulders.
Yes, he does.
Speaking at the rec center on November twenty-second, it'll be stick and puck at one P M. to two P M. and public skating from two thirty to four thirty. And speaking of times, Mr. Latchmore, what is the time for the tree lighting?
So it's going to start at six P M. at Ross Park and then they will follow Santa on the fire truck over to the gazebo where we'll do a, a Christmas carol or two and then the mayor will do the lighting of the tree.
Okay, so it'll follow the tree.
So it's going to be depending upon what time they leave the park.
Okay. And just the last thing that I had is I just wanted to say thank you to all the residents that voiced their concerns, whether here, written down, we do see and hear those comments and we do factor them into our decision-making process, you know, as best we can. The more feedback we get, it actually helps us do our job better, so. Do not, no one should be afraid to voice their opinion to us. That's all I have.
Thank you.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor.
You have to.
Talking about what Mr. trustee Southwick was saying, for the last two years, we haven't had a rec center manager and our administrator, Chris Lottmore, has been doing his duties, helping out and I think he's been doing an excellent job and hopefully now he can, you know.
Take a deep breath.
Take a deep breath and just relax a little bit, so he can get back.
The only problem with that is you could be next to me more often now.
Perfect.
Geez. That's good or bad? For me. Yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Cooper, do you have anything you want to report?
No, well, I just want to thank you for straightening out the law on the boilers. People were confused about that.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, anybody from the public have any last thing they want to say? If not?
Mr. Bernara, I do have something I'd like to add. So with all due respect, Benny, I, I just would like to make a correction. So the, the holiday train will be arriving here in Ross's Point between eight forty-five and nine thirty P M. And also there, what they're asking is if people could bring any canned or non-perishable goods for the food chill donation.
And what day is it?
It is going to be Saturday, November twenty-fifth, so it will arrive at eight forty-five and it will depart at approximately nine thirty P M.
And they're asking for donations of any canned goods and non-perishable goods, correct?
Correct, yes.
Perfect.
I have one other thing. Mr. Mayor, you're going to be eligible to receive the check.
Eligible to receive the check?
Yes, from the Christmas train. They usually drop off a check or whatever.
For the food pantry.
For the food pantry.
Okay, I, if, if I'm not there, you said you'd come for me, but if one way or the other, I will either be there to get it or you, I assume. Okay? Okay? But I'm going to.
Usually you have to say a little speech.
Well, you're going to tell it.
I guess so.
Well, last year, the administrator told me you did a wonderful job of giving a speech,[1777.04]